I want to call the January 20th, 2022 meeting of the Farragut Municipal Planning Commission to order. We'll start out, Mark, with approval of the agenda.
The staff recommends that Agenda Items Number Three and Four be removed from the agenda at the request of the applicants.
I move for approval of removal of Agenda Items Three and Four from the agenda.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We'll move on to approval of the minutes for the December 16th, 2021 meeting.
Move to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I want to remind the audience that if you wish to speak tonight, there are cards at the door, blue cards still. If you will please fill out one of those cards and take it to Mr. Shipley so he can call on you. And you'll be called on when the item you're interested in speaking about is called on. If it's not one of the items that's on the agenda, you'll be called on when we have citizens' comments. So we'll move on to item number five, discussion-
One thing to clarify, that's for non-applicants.
Right, right.
So if you're- you all are applicants, you don't need to fill out a blue card.
Right. And we ask that anyone who speaks, and there's information back there stating all of this, but we ask that anybody who speaks will limit their talking time to five minutes. We'll send a balloon over you and move you out of the way or something. But the applicant, we do need to have more time with the applicant because we all need to ask questions. So, but yes, if you're going to speak, please, please fill out a card. And please be considerate to both the people on the Planning Commission and other people in the audience when you do speak. There's more information on the back of the sheets back there as to the protocol for speaking. Okay, item number five, discussion in public hearing on a zoning map amendment to zone, to rezone partial six, tax map 151, 421 North Watt Road from general commercial C1 to neighborhoods convenience set commercial, NCC, 9.22 acres, Robert Campbell and Associates applicant.
Okay, this item was looked at as a workshop item in December. It's a piece of property just before you leave the town on North Watt Road. Almost all of it is in Farragut, the town limits. There is a small portion that is in Loudoun County that's not really part of this rezoning. They're just rezoning, obviously, the Farragut portion. That's a request for a proposed mixed-use development. I think they showed you all an early concept last month. I don't have a concept tonight, but it's really not required at this time for a rezoning. The property basically is probably what was talked about in December. As you all may remember, we had a community engagement out on Watt Road back in 2018 and tried to get the community's input on what they'd like to see in the future out there. And this property, and the property to the north, which is already zoned neighborhood commercial, was, among other properties, desired to be a mixed-use neighborhood type project that would have a mix of residential and small-scale, non-residential. So their request tonight is consistent with the future land use map that we amended as a result of the public workshops back in 2018. And because the future land use map specifies that this is mixed-use neighborhood, and that's what the NCC district is basically represents. So with that, we do have an ordinance for your recommendation this evening. I do have a couple of people that have signed up to speak, but the staff does believe that the rezoning request is consistent with the land use plan, the future land use map, and the vision of the community in that general area, and we recommend approval of ordinance If you're, whenever you're ready for me to call out the speakers, or if you want to hear from applicant first, it's up to you.
Let's hear from the applicant. And does anybody in the Planning Commission have any questions or comments for the applicant?
Not yet.
No. I'm Robert Campbell, 7523 Tigard Lane. We're obviously in favor of what the staff has recommended. We've worked with you all, workshops and different things, to come up with this rezoning, and we feel it's appropriate. I think there were a couple of questions that were asked at the workshop. One was site distance. We've checked that, and we're kind of at the top of the hill going back. We're in that neighborhood of about 450 feet-ish. It's hard to exactly know because we're not exactly sure what grade we're coming in with the road there on Watt Road. And your speed limit's posted at 25 miles an hour, I think, there, although we're pretty confident that nobody goes 25 miles an hour, so. But, I mean, that's typically the rule of thumb. It's 10 times the speed limit, so we'll have to work that exact measurement out with staff and engineering when that time comes. We do believe that, you know, we talked about the rain gardens and things that are going to be inside the development that will make sure that we don't have some sort of straight-through speeding problem there. So we think we've addressed the two or three things that you've asked, and we are right where the turn lane or the widening kind of comes together there. So there's two lanes right across from where we are. Not ideal, but it is, it is where we are, so we'll have to look at what we do there just from a turn lane standpoint off of Watt Road or what we have to have.
Mr. Campbell, are you going to need any T-Dot approval on that? I can't remember if that's considered a-
I don't think Watt Road is a T-Dot road. I don't think it's a state route.
Okay. All right. You're in good shape then.
Yeah. Tell me about it.
I've been up there. I think there's definitely a good spot for line of sight there. It makes sense. And quite frankly, some of these things that we're discussing tonight really aren't pertinent until we get to the site plan stage.
Anybody else have any questions or comments from the Planning Commission?
When we get to the site plan, I want also to make sure, you know, that the two lanes come down to one there, so drivers are going to be kind of paying attention to what's happening in the other lane, and so we'll need to look at not only the site distance, but how that's all integrated.
No, 100% agree.
We'll get to that later.
Yes, sir, 100% agree. The good news is it looks like there's enough shoulder and stuff out there to kind of do some things maybe with it, so I think we can, we'll just have to see what happens.
Factor that into the concept.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Anybody else on the Planning Commission? Anybody in the audience have any questions or comments?
We have people.
Well, I have two people that have signed up.
I'm sorry.
People have signed up.
I have two people that have signed up, so. First one's Jody Scott, and the second one is Mike Driver. So I guess, Jody, if you're first.
Mind coming up to the lectern and-
And tell us who you are and give us an address, please.
I'm Jody Scott, 1185 Amberly Court. I am on, off of Harrison Lane, which if this is rezoned where it's going to go out to Harrison Lane opposite of Watt Road, there's going to be a major speed issue on that. And I know that's not what this meeting's about, but we're just here to see, you know, I guess in my opinion, before approving a rezoning, like Watt Road really does need to be looked at prior to approving this to be rezoned with that many more cars going in and out. I think that it would be beneficial to look at the traffic before approving it to be rezoned. I, per se, don't have a problem with townhouses in partial commercial going in there, but I drive that Watt Road every day, a couple of times. I'm on Harrison, going down to Kingston Pike, going down to the interstate. You have all those truckers. It's not ideal. I mean, going from the two lanes into one coming up, people don't realize the right lane coming to an end, I mean, it's everyday road rage right there. So you have people turning left out of this subdivision or even right going to Kingston Pike. I don't know what y'all are planning on doing, but it is a major problem on Watt Road. And Harrison's a major problem with the speeding. And coming out of our subdivision, we're near the Harrison Road and the Harrison Lane, it's hard to see left from coming where this subdivision's going to be or this town, this rezoning. Coming down that hill, we can't see left. We have to see through our neighbor's yard to see if any cars are coming before we get to our stop sign. Along with that, we have a lot of walkers going to the park, Bob Leonard. You know, I'd like to promote some sidewalks going in on there as you did over on Watt Road, because right now it's dangerous for me to walk my dogs and kids on bikes going down that road. So if you're adding that many more cars going in and out on Harrison Lane, it is going to be a problem. So, but like I said, I'd rather have this going in there than commercial all throughout that, but I really don't want it going through onto Harrison Lane. I'd like for it to just stick to the Watt Road egress and ingress, coming in and out.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Driver.
My name is Mike Driver. I live at 211 Amberly Court there in Amberly Meadows. I'm currently the president of the HOA there. I've been in this room before as a teacher at Farragut High School. I had my students here to teach AP Government. I had Miss Holliday's two sons, Scott and Brian. I currently teach at Maryville High School toward the end of my career, and I encourage my students always participate in government and go to town hall meetings. I know this is not a site, well, we've seen the preliminary site plan. What concerns us as a neighborhood on Harrison, Harrison Lane, which this property is, I don't know how much total it is in Loudoun County. We have our Commissioner Van Schafer here tonight, and I'm not sure exactly if they have petitioned anything with Loudoun County Commission yet or anything at that point. We're concerned about Harrison Lane, the traffic exiting, the rain, I don't, what you call them, but essentially it's causing you to slow down through there. We're going to have a lot of people exiting this development, which I think it's a good development. NCC is a good zoning thing there instead of all commercial. However, people are going to come out on Harrison Lane. We've seen it as a tending church at Two Rivers. We've seen the traffic pick up there quite a bit. It's a narrow stretch from Harrison Lane to Harrison Road out to Watt Road. I've been there 13 years, I've been, which is again slightly in Loudoun County. I've been in that area for over, well, about 25 years, and I've seen the growth there. And it's, the concern is when we come out of our subdivision Amberly Court and we turn right and go up left into, toward Watt Road off Harrison, because Harrisons always get mixed up, Harrison Lane there, I guess, it's very dangerous. We have a lot of older folks in our subdivision, and I know I've had a couple of people say they've almost been hit as you turn out because you come down, if you guys will ever look at it and go out there sometime, where they would exit out the back way, and I know it's not, you know, it's not into town of Farragut, so I know it's, I just want to express our concern. I think the, you know, you know, we've got a lot of positives, but the traffic is what's concerning a lot of our residents in the site distance there. I travel Watt Road every day, and I've seen it get busier over the, over the years. When I started teaching at Farragut High School back in 1992, we had one red light between Farragut High School and Watt Road. That was it. Now, what, we got 11 or something like that? So the growth has been tremendous. We love the growth. We like the plans. And of course, we have a big apartment complex coming in behind Little Joe's, which is just going to pick up the traffic even more on Watt Road. But thank you for giving me a few minutes to speak, and again, we know that this is just a preliminary planning commission, and we hope to be back, you know, whenever it gets to the next stage of the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Then, Mark.
That's all that signed up, yes, ma'am.
Have any more questions or comments from anybody?
No comments.
I'm just going to just address, because I know that you guys are concerned, and certainly we don't want to see this become a cut through. I know the developer would not want to see this become a cut through because that's, it's going to be a residential area, which I agree with you, NCC is a good, it lowers the difference between commercial, it lowers the intensity of that land use. And so it's probably a good buffer for what's coming onto Harrison Lane, but we don't want to see it become a cut through either. And I wonder if there's, you already have issues, I wonder if the Loudoun County Commission has any plans for Harrison Lane to address its current issues, because it sounds like it already has issues with people cutting through on Harrison Road and coming down. I know that there's a resident that spoke to me and indicated that they're cutting down Harrison Road to go to Harrison Lane to go to the church. So they're flying down there, and of course, we're seeing speeding everywhere. So I know that that's a frustration, and certainly something we want to see addressed in design so that that doesn't become something nobody wants. Certainly, the residents there won't want it either. I would love to have a conversation with the county commissioner if, and talk about what their plans are. If there's traffic calming that they think that that might be effective on Harrison Lane, that's certainly something that needs to be considered. But, Mr. Driver, I'd love your email just to keep you in the loop when these things are coming up. I know you're probably keeping, you know how to keep track of what's going on, but just in case, just, I would love your email. Maybe you could leave it with Mark, and then I'll just keep you in the loop with what's going on.
Thank you. I'd like to point out that I think we have a temporary bottleneck that's occurring, at least I hope it's temporary, at the intersection of Watt Road and Kingston Pike. I spend almost every day in West Farragut. I think that, what I suspect is happening with the backups that are happening at Watt Road and Kingston Pike, especially in the afternoons, when you've got Watt Road traffic trying to turn left or right onto Kingston Pike coming from the interstate, I suspect there's a lot of cut-through traffic that's going Harrison Road and Harrison Lane right now. I do think that there's going to be some significant improvements, albeit it's taken a lot longer than anybody would like, that's going to help release some of that pressure that's happening at that intersection. Again, that's not necessarily, doesn't address concerns with cut-through traffic. That may happen at the development in the future, and I think with some good design and some circuitous design, I think that you kind of try to discourage that cut-through traffic where it's not a shortcut. The reason why we really embrace the connectivity is, for instance, if you're in that neighborhood and there's a, let's say there's a little Salsa Rita's or something out there in this development, instead of having to drive all the way down, obviously, we'd love for you to run your bike over there, walk over there, but at the end of the day, we're in a suburban society, most people get in their car and drive. I'm as guilty as anybody else. But instead of having to go down Harrison Lane and Harrison Road and go back up Watt Road, you know, go a mile in your car where you could have gone a quarter mile in your car, that's kind of the idea behind the connectivity, both vehicular connectivity and pedestrian connectivity. So it is something we take real seriously. We understand, we do deal with connectivity issues a lot, and we hear kind of both sides of it, and we try to weigh both the local, the immediate local community such as yourselves as well as the rest of the community, and it's a challenge. But we do kind of try to look at the whole picture. I think right now you're, and I deal with it. I'm on Watt Road, not every day, but I go through Watt Road intersection, at least westbound or eastbound on Kingston Pike, probably every day. And, you know, it takes multiple cycles to get through the light, you know, everything's tied down to one lane, and they're kind of out there like molasses course in January. It's hard to get, you know, poor concrete and do all the other things that need to be done. But I do think a lot of that pressure is going to be relieved when that intersection is finally, finally finished, if that gives you any hope. But again, I think the NCC is actually a much lower intensity use, as Louise said, than a C1. There's amazing the amount of traffic that a C1 district could, could create if it was fully built out based upon the capacities that they're currently allowed. So I think tonight we're really focused on zoning, and then we can deal with some of these other issues. We've talked about line of sight, we've talked about connectivity and so forth, and, you know, whether they're going to need a center turn lane or a D cell lane, I mean, or all the above. But I will deal with those things at a later time. We do appreciate it. We think, we think this is compatible with what the land use plan has called for, and I really, I don't see any reason to delay their zoning.
Anybody else?
Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion. Motion to approve the zoning to, from C1 to NCC.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Did you have anything else you wanted to add?
One for you all, for the Loudoun County folks, the next step is this goes to the Board of Mayor and Altmann for two meetings, at least two meetings. I'm not sure what that next meeting specifically will be. We'll have to figure that out, but-
For the rezoning.
For the rezoning. So what he's talking about is that's in particular just for the rezoning, but if you really want to get into the nuts and bolts and the details, that's at the site plan stage, and that's up to the applicant of whenever they submit their application package for site plan. If they're trying to get on the February agenda, that deadline was Monday of this week, and so if they're trying to get on the March agenda, Robert knows all the deadlines, but nevertheless, that's probably where, where folks would definitely want to have your concerns addressed and figure out, you know, what's best for, you know, the local area as well as the community, and that'll be at the site plan stage. Robert, best guess of when you guys are going to try to get on the agenda?
I think there's some conversations that need to happen, and we also need to look, you know, there's some other costs about not having that second access point too. We need to kind of evaluate for the overall side.
I understand. So anyway, any of you folks out there, the Town of Farragut website, our folks here at the Town Hall, they do a great job of keeping that updated. It is also published in the, in the famous Press Enterprise, so if you get that paper and want to check theirs, but it's probably a little easier, just go straight to townoffarragut.org, and you can go to, straight to the agendas, pull it right up, and you see the exact same information that we see as commissioners, and so you'll know what's, you can kind of follow along, and that way your voice is going to be heard when it's appropriate.
Can I ask a quick question?
Mike, you should come back up to the lectern if you don't mind. Believe it or not, we've got two people at home somewhere watching this on video.
Do you know if Harrison-
We need you to also give us your name and address.
Oh, Richard Scott, 1185 Amberly Court. Do you know if Harrison Lane, is it in Farragut or is it half in Farragut and half in Loudoun County?
Primarily Harrison Lane is in Loudoun County.
Harrison Lane's in Loudoun County. Harrison Road, part of Harrison Road is in-
All Harrison Road. About the 90% eastern portion of Harrison Road's in Knox County and in Farragut. It's, there's a funny little germandering that happens over at the gas station and the, and that, because that's technically Loudoun County, but it got annexed by Farragut, and who knows how that happened some years ago, but it did. And it's, and hopefully, folks in Loudoun County appreciate the parks, and we sure appreciate when folks in Loudoun County come shopping Farragut, so.
Okay, well, there seems to be some confusion. Even the people in our neighborhood don't know, is Loudoun, or is Harrison Lane the one that goes to the park?
Let's think about this, north and south. If it runs north and south, it's in Loudoun County. If it runs east and west, it's primarily in Farragut.
Okay, well, the one that goes by the park, once it gets past our subdivision going up the hill towards this property, that, that road is like just dinky. It's like it was made in the 1800s for wagons.
Well, you've got a gentleman back there named Mr. Shaver that is your county commissioner that's going to be able to, he and his, his entourage down in Loudoun, they're the ones to talk to about that, to be able to do something with that. I suspect your road doesn't generate a whole lot of traffic to warrant very high on the priority list. It is what it is, but we do understand your concerns about putting more traffic on a narrow road.
Yeah, it's just awful narrow.
We have that problem. Sometimes we try to, when we go to repave it, we try to take the asphalt out a little further, and that, that's been kind of helpful in helping to widen that, but yes.
Shoulders, kind of cheat the shoulders the best you can with the road profile that you have. That's the cheapest way of doing it, and, you know, sometimes you just, you do what you can with the budget that you have.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item number six. Item number six, discussion in public hearing on a site plan with the site update to the existing Claret and Inn in association with a conversion to a sleep inn at 11314 Campbell Lakes Drive, 3.29 acres on C-1 Campbell State Station Lodging LLC applicant.
Yeah, this is, this item represents a renovation, exterior and interior renovation, really, in my opinion, much-needed renovation to the Claret and Inn, which is just to the east of Cracker Barrel on Campbell Lakes Drive. This is roughly what the existing building looks like. It's pretty, it's almost all stucco, and it is kind of dated, yeah. So what they're wanting to do is come in and incorporate a lot of architectural elements to do what they can with what, with what the existing building allows them to do. It obviously doesn't meet our masonry requirement, and it wouldn't with the renovation, but clearly from the staff's perspective, they're bringing the building much closer to compliance with their architectural design standards. The only question, the only thing that in our review that we had a question about in terms of the exterior was just the purple tower area at the entrance, and just trying to see if that could be maybe revisited. This, again, is just the staff's observation. You all may not have an issue with it, but similar to what we worked out with ORNL a few years ago when they had some blue that was a pretty big portion of their building. In this case, we would, we were recommending that they incorporate the purple into their, just their signage, similar to something like that, and leave the rest of the architecture more in, more consistent with the remainder of the building. Most of the remainder of the building is earth tone, and here's some other examples of where they've basically just used the purple in their signage. And that way they can still brand it, but yet it, the building has a little bit more cohesion to it, and there's not a kind of a radical contrast in color with this, with this element. So with that, and we had a few other minor cleanup items on the plans. They're pretty easy, very, very easy to correct, and we recommend approval of the renovation subject to addressing these, these five remaining comments associated with this project. And the owners here, if you have any questions, you have to go up there.
Does anybody on the Planning Commission have any questions for Mark first?
I'd like to echo Mark's concerns about, about the purple. We've, I'd like to be consistent with what we've done in the past, and I understand you're going to hang the sleep, sleep inn flag, and so, and I know that corporate probably has some, has some corporate branding that they want you to, to follow. We've got to figure out a way to get, get your purple down into the parameters of your sign and not on such a large element. It would not only set a slippery slope for future precedence, but it would be really unfair to some other folks that we've held to this standard. We do appreciate what you're doing. Even though the architecture's unique, I've always thought it was, I went, 25 years ago or 27 years ago when I first came to the Town of Farragut, I always thought it looked like something out of Star Wars. And so I'm kind of a Star Wars geek, and I always thought it was kind of cool, but I do understand it's time for a change, and you got, and you got to, you got to compete. If there's one other bit of advice that I could give you is, you've got the dark band down low, which I'll kind of call a Wayne's cot, that's basically on the first level of your building that's, that's shown as a, as a dark, it's actually called an Ephesus base band, which is a stucco base band. If I could encourage you to, maybe that would be a great place to incorporate some, something masonry through there, whether you do like the, the other photograph that Mark showed of the, of the other sleep inn. The reason being is that when it's down low and it gets touched, somebody's in there pulling weeds, or somebody, you know, drags a dolly by it, or a suitcase by it, and they're banging into your stucco, anything that's masonry sure is going to hold up a lot better, even if you only do, you know, four feet of masonry. And it goes a long way in trying to meeting the intent of the, kind of the masonry requirement that we have, but I think it would really give you a better product, and you're really not going to spend any more money. Assuming you've got a footer there to be able to put masonry on, or you could do some, some thin stone or thin brick that, that adheres to the building if you don't have a footing there to support it, but I would encourage you to do that. I think long-term, you would, you know, if kid runs by it on a skateboard and puts a big gouge in your masonry versus a kid hits it on a skateboard with a little brick or stone, you know, it's going to hurt the skateboard, not your, not your building.
I understand what you're saying, but I don't know, at this point, we have that, whatever the foundation there or not yet, because that old building, and architect knows more than I do, but unfortunately, he was on the way to the here, and he gave me a call. I was going home. I'm sorry, but I have a heavy- I was going home, I'm sorry, but I have a heavy fever and he was hardly breathing. So I was worried. I said, Gary, you go home and let me talk to them, see what they say, you know, but I should not have any problem.
Can you give us your name just for our records?
My name is Kishor, K.I.S.H.O.R. Last name is Taylor, T.A.I.L.O.R. I go by Ken.
Okay.
Okay, that's easy enough. But we understand that, but just to your knowledge, all around the building, there is about three feet and plus the walkway around it, that there is no way any cars or anything go and touch any corner of the building.
You're saying there's flower beds?
Flower beds.
There are flower beds all the way around the building?
Yes, all the way around.
Okay, well, that'll, that'll definitely help.
Yeah, so there is no way there is any cars or anything go around the building.
Okay.
And like as far as the purple concern, we definitely take that concern to the corporate and I'm sure they will work with us and there should be no issue in there.
Ken, could you provide your address for the record, please?
My home address?
Your mailing address or it could be your business address.
Yeah.
It's just for the...
This one is 11341 Campbell Lake Drive.
Well, number one, we, we appreciate your investment in the community and we're delighted that you're doing this and, and I'd like to make a motion, subject to these four items...
I'd like to make a few comments.
Yeah, well, I'll be, we have plenty of time for discussion. I mean, a lot of times we'll have discussion after a motion in a second, but I was just going to say that I, I am good, good with it as presented, other than the purple, we're going to have to, we're going to have to work through the purple issue.
Definitely.
Any more questions?
No, I want to make a comment about the purple. I also looked at other examples, the examples that Mark showed were, you know, showed clearly that they didn't have to over emphasize the purple. And there's another aspect of the purple I saw in some of the other sites off the web showed lighted canopies of purple and everything like that, so we're not interested in a lot of backlighting.
Not really the corporate...
But these are, these are excellent examples of what we might be example of.
Right.
I'm just excited to see this. This, this was, this, it was a tough building, just because it was, it's very dated, so I'm thrilled to see that you guys are renovating it and bringing it up to date. It's, it's going to be nice when it's done.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
One thing on that purple, if you could just have Gary email, email me a revision to that aspect of it and I can share that with the planning commission just to make sure that it reflects what they're, what they're, so you wouldn't have to come back to them.
With it, as long as it was limited to within the confines of the sign as, as allowed by the VRB and our signage ordinance. And that way you don't have to come back. If it's, if it's beyond that scope, I think it needs to come back to the planning commission.
Yeah. Is that, is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
They just put it in the signage? Okay. Okay.
So, do I have a motion?
Yep.
He made his motion. No one made his motion, I second it.
Okay. And then we started questioning.
We changed the order of business all the time.
Yeah, we changed the order of, yeah, too much.
We don't do that.
Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you for coming and we appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kishor.
Thank you.
When do you expect this will be done, sir? I'm sorry, when do you expect it will be done? What are you hoping for?
Well, we took over this property in last July and we are hoping to be finished by coming March, but since we're just getting approval and it's going to be a little, you know, labor shortage and all that thing, I still think we'll like to finish by before June 30th. So we will try our best to continue the business as well as, you know, update the property.
Yep. All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number seven, discussion in public hearing on a site plan for Score Hotel, 1320 Outlet Drive, 4.34 acres, Zoned OD-Re/ E, Land Development Solutions applicant.
That'd be perfect. Me, I'll just introduce this and then I'll turn it over to them. So they came all the way from Greenville, South Carolina through the mountains, so we appreciate that.
Yeah, leave it on the floor.
That's good.
All right. Well, this is...
I hope you're not having to go back to Greenville tonight.
Yep.
Oh, no.
Yeah, you may want to.
Or somebody here could probably get you a discount on a room in Faragut.
Get you a discount. That's, they can see it there, that's probably fine, doesn't matter. There's a site plan for, the property is just to the east of Topgolf and this is a hotel that really is kind of intended to complement Topgolf. It's really kind of to be a hotel that's associated with Topgolf. There's 106 unit rooms proposed in this hotel, it's four stories. They have revised the site plan to basically have a joint access. There's actually more property to the east where an existing detention basin that they're using for the overall development is located over here in the far eastern corner.
That's for Topgolf too?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's, that may or may not be reworked, I'm not sure. We could talk about that in a minute, but that's kind of the overall piece of property. You can see where that access comes in and it would tie into the east from there. The project has, and this is just heavy duty asphalt for the dumpster route, there's a shaded area. There's also pervious pavers, concrete over in this part of the project to satisfy our low impact development requirement. Got a loading area over here, pretty straightforward site plan. There's an existing sidewalk on Outlet Drive tying into that. We had some comments that were at your places on the site plan. Most of them, almost three fourths of them probably are just clerical items that are, should be very easy to address with the site plan revision. There were maybe four that may or may not have to come back to you. It's really up to you all's comfort level, but the detention basin calculations, that was a comment from a town engineer and we will need to get that. Normally that's something that is reviewed pretty much wholly by staff, so that may or may not need to come back to you all. I'm not sure if they're making any revisions to the detention basin. Maybe Chad can talk to that, talk about that here in a minute. There will be a retaining wall kind of along the interstate back here and we'll need to see the design and the appearance of what that is going to be. It's kind of back there along the interstate and they didn't have that in this submittal yet, so that, that's something that we'll need. We'll need a full lighting plan that's part of the site plan and they did have some lighting for the parking lot lights in a separate submittal, but they haven't worked out their wall lights yet, so really they just need to get it all together and then include it in a updated site plan. If you all need to see that when it comes in, we can, we can, you know, see what you want to do with that. And then the fourth thing was just the, the architecture of the building. This is obviously, you know, the Outlet Drive corridor, Topgolf's a very modern building, so what they're trying to do with the, the architecture on this building is create a very modern looking building. Obviously if this was proposed in the town center area, it would be kind of out of, out of compliance, but it, their, their idea is to try to, you know, architecturally as best they can blend in with the, the general surrounding. The colors frankly are pretty much all earth tone, they appear to be. I don't really see any that are, you know, super bright or, or out of, out of, you know, compliance with the, with our design standards. The masonry requirement, I think something that I'd like for them to talk about, how they're proposing to satisfy that. In this zoning district, there is a lower masonry requirement for this size building. It's four stories and over 25,000 square feet, it's just a 25% masonry. But masonry is a pretty limited, you know, range of products in our architectural design standards and so that's something that they may have to modify a little bit. And then the question of, you know, whether the building meets the other design standards that they are required to meet even in this zoning district. Like having a, a little bit more of a defined cap on the building so it doesn't, it kind of just goes out into space. And I know that's part of their idea of keeping it kind of a modern look, but you know, that's, that's something that I think the planning commission needs to weigh in on. So with that, I think I'll turn it over to you all if you all have any questions of me and certainly the applicants can try to answer any questions you may have of them. They've got a little bit larger rendering of the building that they're proposing and if you all have any questions, we'll try to answer those for you.
I know that the timing didn't work out exactly right with the Topgolf site plan, but it sure would have been nice if, if, in a perfect world, to have more connectivity, you know, i.e., you know, shared parking lots or, you know, for this, if you're over at Topgolf and you've been drinking a lot of beer and you want to go back to your hotel, you know, it would've been nice to be able to stumble home instead of having to get in your car and drive, but I understand, I can see the topography that you're dealing with and the constraints and, but we were talking about connectivity on a previous item and it is something that we do embrace and, and we do, we do think folks do appreciate. Again, the, the only other option I could possibly see here, looking at your, your grading plan, is, is maybe having a sidewalk that comes in and goes across the slope, but quite frankly, by the time you do that, you're going to be way out of ADA compliance and you're going to end up all the way back over at your entrance anyway. So maybe there's just no way to have another sidewalk connection a little closer to, and this has probably been discussed at the staff developer meeting and so I apologize if it was, but it could, maybe you guys give us a little kind of recap about what you tried and why it didn't work on, as far as pedestrian connectivity?
Yeah, Chad may be able to address that because they've been the engineer. I'm Brett Rogers, I'm with Realty Link Development out of Greenville, South Carolina. The address is 201 River Place, Greenville.
Thank you.
Connectivity is very important to it. This new hotel concept really is co-branded by Topgolf and so Topgolf and trying to, as Mark indicated, trying to carry that, that flag, that conceptual view and look and appearance between the Topgolf product itself and this new hotel concept is critical to the brand for both Topgolf and ourselves. And connectivity because of that, because it is co-branded, is, is very important. Some locations, we're looking at some connective, you know, facilities that ties together. Here, we just didn't have that ability, the way this site is larger at the top and kind of throttles back, you know, to the smaller, the rear. So Topgolf's outfield is the, the backstop really of the hotel, so you're kind of at the widest point of their facility.
That's why I say that, I think the ship's already sailed.
It's just, it's just, it was just a hard one to work out, that connectivity that to us is critical in importance as it is to you guys. So, I mean, we've looked at other options, I don't know if there is a valid option to make it work without going down to Outlet Drive and then going up, you know, there, so.
Right.
But...
I, I will make one other statement and, and I've kind of made it to any of our, any of our developers or retailers that have developed a long I-40 in the Town of Faragut is that those trees that are out in the public right of way along the T-dot, in the T-dot right of way, they're, they're not your trees. As much as a lot of folks like to go and, and cut them down to increase the visibility of their business, but those are not, not your trees. So I just want to go on the record of, of saying, obviously if you've got unhealthy trees and some of those trees have kind of been butchered with, with the billboard companies and things like that, but if I don't go on record of saying that and all of a sudden you cut down all the trees and you're like, well, we didn't know, we're putting you on notice, you do know that, that, that we do take that kind of seriously and, and we would appreciate the fact that if, if you would respect as, as many of those trees, obviously they can, you know, they've been pruned up to help market that site over the years. I mean, it looks good, there's, there's good visibility from the interstate over to, to both you guys in Topgolf, but anyway, we do, do appreciate your, your future cooperation on that.
Yes, sir. And our, you know, to address some of the architectural elements on the building, our architect, Brian Doran, came with us and so, you know, to explain, you know, some of the material, I don't know if it would benefit the planning commission for them to walk through some of the material selections that were used on the building.
Yeah, I think so, it'd be great.
Yes.
Because I know the masonry, trying to meet the masonry content or requirement is something that we're, we're trying to make sure we understand and are work, are going to work to meet, but instead of using like a true brick, like a red brick, it's just an alternate product there. So Brian, I'm going to let you introduce yourself and kind of share a little bit.
Bring my bag and goodies.
I'm happy to help you where I can.
My name is Brian Doran. I'm with Core 3 Design, that's C-O-R-3 Design. We're located in Greenville, South Carolina as well. As Brett stated, the design of this hotel is very modern and contemporary. It's intended to be that way because of the relationship with Topgolf and the association that this hotel is going to have with Topgolf on multiple sites. To talk to materials. I have a few handouts here, if that's okay.
Sure.
Thank you.
If you want, we can just pass them down.
We'll distribute it and let you...
And the last one's for... While Brett's passing that out...
We'll make sure Mark gets one.
I wanted to share too that, you know, we're excited about the hotel and this new concept, this new brand and this is actually, you know, will be, this will be the first one that has been constructed yet, so Faragut kind of gets to be our, our guinea pig, so to speak, and obviously staying as close to the brand, you know, as we can is, is, is very important, you know, particularly this first one that we're doing, so. But Brett, I'll, I'll step back and be quiet.
Okay, so to kind of go through our material board here and kind of talk you through the exterior finishes on the building. These four samples here are called Neolith Panels. They're composite green material that we've chosen because of the green quality of them plus the aesthetics. The first handout you have there that has hotels written on it, that is, these products used in other hotel applications. The bottom here, we have a wood appearance siding, but it's an aluminum product, so it's more durable and less likely to wear over time and look degraded. We have two Ephes colors that we plan to use on the building. This metal color is the coping cap on top of the building and is also what these metal panels are and I'll kind of show you where everything is on, on those elevations. We've got architectural metal panels that we're planning for the building as well. And that is, should be the second or third in that package that shows. Then lastly, this is our masonry product. It is called Airstone and that also is in your package there. Kind of shows what that product is and how it looks and how it's used. It is used as a masonry product as...
Set in mortar.
Yeah, it's, it's a mortar set product. It's standard brick depth. The difference is, obviously it's black, which is not very common in brick. And secondly, the units are three feet long instead of a normal eight inch brick. What this allows us to do is create different interests and patterns and joint alignments within, within the building. So that product is the base of pretty much the entire building and the two stair towers. With that amount of brick on the building, we're only at 17%. With that amount of brick on the building, we're only at 17%. And I understand that the requirement is.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Yeah.
Okay. So that's certainly, if, if you all don't agree with how we have it laid out, we can certainly address and add more of that material to the building. I know I'm not far from a microphone, do I need?
You're fine, you're fine, you're fine.
So to go through kind of where the materials are, the metal panels, which you have photo of, is this corner piece here of the hotel.
Is that this product? Is that this product?
No, that's what I'm.
Is that the Centria? Is that the Centria product? Okay.
Yep.
Back page of our packets.
Centria's been around forever. They're a high-quality product. We've used them on multiple projects. So that would be this corner of the building. The front of the building from here all the way around to this point is a combination of those four colors of Neolith panels. This section from here is the wood grained looking aluminum siding. And then our whole base, this stair tower, and then around all the way down the back to this stair tower is this product here, which is our, we're calling our masonry product. And then the balance of the building, which is this area here, here, and then around the back is Ephesus and a combination of those two.
Two observations. It's definitely not boring. And the second one is, it, we like to see iconic elements and you've got multiple iconic elements. I think it's a real interesting building. I think your brick product, you've got three and five-eighth inch bed depth, it, that's a brick, even though it may not, you know, it's not Williamsburg, and that's okay, but that is a brick, there's no doubt about it, just like we allow folks to use, you know, large pieces of cast stone and, and, and other products. So I think that's good. I do think that even though you have a great-looking building, I, I do think we've got to get you to 25%. We've held, held other folks feet to the fire at that and, and it's, it's, we've got to be fair and consistent.
And I can show you how I can get there if you'd like me to.
Oh, that'd be awesome, yeah. Yeah, that'd be great.
So this area here, which I didn't really address earlier, was going to be that panel that Brett held up earlier.
Mm-hmm. Kind of corrugated style.
Yes.
Yep.
So we'll do away with that and this will continue to be masonry all the way across to the corridor chair.
Is your corridor chair, is that large enough to drive through? Is that, okay, so it is, okay, that, that is your main entrance, that's your lobby?
Yes, that's correct. The other area that we would propose to take to masonry, instead of having the metal panels full height.
Mm-hmm.
We would take our masonry around on the base of this as well, which, the height of this masonry is 14 feet above the base.
And quite frankly, it kind of continues that, I don't know, pedestal in, in a certain way.
It creates our base all the way around the building. And then if we haven't met it at that point, which I'm pretty sure we probably haven't, I would take this back tower here and brick that whole thing. And that would definitely get us to our 25%.
I mean, quite frankly, the back of your building is going to be very visible to the Topgolf. The folks up there swinging a club, they're, they're, that's the side of the building they're actually going to see.
That's right. I mean, the back, the back outfield of Topgolf basically is here.
Mm-hmm.
It's on this, this backside of this building.
Mm-hmm. That elevation. Well, it's cool. It's not cookie cutter, that's for sure. You've got a lot of design elements. Complicated, complicated building.
This is, two years in the making to get to this point with it and, like Brett said, Farragut is the, the first location of hopefully many more to come.
So we all want it to look nice.
Yes.
That's, that's the intent.
Certainly, our brick requirement is, is in, in an effort to keep it looking classic, not in, I guess, not in architectural terms, but in, it's going to hold, have a holding power, it's going to, it's always going to look nice.
Right.
And that is obviously the goal with anything that, whatever you're creating 10 years from now, it's still going to be a, a good-looking building, and that has, is always our concern. I certainly don't want to compromise your architectural design because I know it's probably taken you quite some time to even get to this point.
Yes, it has.
Because it is a very new, novel concept. So that is important, that we're not compromising it, but in, in our requirements that we're providing, something that's really going to have holding, staying power. So that is, I guess that's kind of, and I'm not an architect, so, and I know it becomes your baby and I, and I, I can't imagine that when you're trying to, okay, I've spent so much time on this and now you're going to require us to do this, I hope in what we're asking for is elevating it, that you look at it and say, oh, okay, well, that's a good idea.
There's nothing in adding the extra 8% of masonry that takes away from what we're trying to do at all.
Okay, all right.
And that, that's why we've chosen a lot of these hard materials. They're meant to last and same thing, you know, aluminum, any of our metal stuff is going to be very durable and, you know, the, the Ephesus is so far up above the ground that it's really untouchable, so there's really no damage that's going to occur to it. So we've tried to take into account all of those factors in our design and I think we did a pretty good job.
I, I think you did too. We're excited, we're very, we're very, well, you know, this whole corridor is exciting to us, so we're thrilled that Topgolf is coming in, we're glad that you, your partners, this is what we wanted to see, is, is some of these partners coming in with Topgolf to, to kind of elevate that whole corridor, so thank you.
Yes, I certainly appreciate your innovative design and all the elements that went into it. I mean, you touched a lot of bases and.
Yeah.
It may look simple, but the more you look at it, it's very complex.
Two years, it's.
And I appreciate the fact that you already had considered what you would do for the, to get to the 25%.
Absolutely.
Anybody else have any more questions?
I, I had a question mark on the master sign. It's determined that that's on the Topgolf property and not on the score proposed property?
It's shown on both of them right now. It was shown maybe accidentally on the Topgolf one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any more discussion about the, off the 20-feet setback?
No, mainly for this site plan, they just need, we don't really even need them to show it, they just need to provide the space for it and the location for it, what that will meet setbacks. That was one of the comments that I had because it didn't appear that this hypothetical location of the sign was 20 feet from the interstate right of way, which, which is the setback requirement, and it's only 10 feet from here, so. But this is okay, 10 feet, this just has to be 20 feet down here. They just need to, you know, make sure that they've got the room for it mainly with this site plan, but that'll be a separate review and approval through the visual resources review board.
I want to keep in mind that right now, that kind of the view corridor was more kind of underneath the canopy of those trees on, on I-40. And so you, you've got eligibility to go quite a bit taller here than we, we allow in the rest of the town and you guys might really want to think about that, is that, you know, is that necessarily the right way to do that? I think your building itself and the architectural detail and, yeah, I can't, I'm sure it'll look awesome at night with accent lighting. I mean, I think that's, that's, a lot of that is your sign because it's, it's such a, you know, iconic building. So you might want to just think about, you know, when you're driving down I-40, you know, if all of a sudden, the reason I say that is your temptation is, oh, our sign's so tall that we've got to cut all these trees down, so.
Does the commission want to see the revised building plan, bring that back to you next time or?
What, you mean with the brick on it? Uh, yeah, I'd like to see it, but I don't want to hold them up. I mean, these guys are probably, I mean, you're, you're past design development and schematic and, I mean, you're, you're trying to get rolling and put things out to bid and hire a GC and all sorts of other things, so we really don't want to hold you up. The problem is, the areas that, that he's, that they're offering to add the brick make a ton of sense, if we felt like we could get that into the record tonight, or if you feel like you understand the scope of what they're doing, I'm comfortable with it.
Whatever y'all are comfortable with is fine with me because I'm not.
I don't necessarily need to see it. I mean, it'd be great to see it again, but I, what I really don't want to do is I don't want to hold them up. This is a great, you know, especially this time of year, it's a good time of year to get all the planning done so you guys can, you know, hopefully get rolling when the weather does get, start opening up and get sunny again.
Y'all have any other changes you want to request or is that just the masonry? Is that, you okay with the cap?
We're going to, we're going to tee somebody off.
I'm just, yeah, you know.
I think for something as complicated as this, basically to have 18 comments, I think that's pretty impressive, quite frankly. So I'm, I'm, I'm pretty pleased with, with what we're seeing. Obviously, you've got some housekeeping items that you guys got to deal with, fire flows and a few other engineering things and letters of credit, but otherwise, I'm, other than the, the, you know, the brick and they've, they've offered a, a solution that makes sense, I, I think we're ready to go.
About your motion?
That's, that's my motion. Motion to approve subject to items one through 18 with the applicant's revisions of additional brick.
Second.
Wait a minute. Time out.
But we're still discussing, we've got plenty of time to discuss.
Okay, I'm good with it.
Did you have any questions, Chad, on any of the comments?
I'm Chad Brown with Land Development Solutions, 310 Simmons Road. I just wanted to circle back to a couple of the comments that Noah had made and that you had made, Mark. Noah, we were involved with the Topgolf development and that connectivity was looked at at that time, but with the outfield taking up such a large portion of the back part of the property, there was no way, and the grades, there was no way to make something like that happen.
And quite frankly, even if you had swapped them and put the hotel on the other end, this probably wasn't wide enough for the outfield.
It wasn't wide enough, exactly.
And so it just.
Because everything narrowed down, because those were all combined, they were all one lot at one time and we subdivided them back then. So that was looked at back then. To your point on the trees for the interstate, we had our survey crew go out and shoot the entire drip line and there's no grading or anything taking, in fact, in any of that, so we have a true protection plan that shows that, you know, they'll stay out of that drip lines and all that.
I'm surprised you'd send your crews out into the right of way for that. I mean, that's not, you guys aren't going to be, you're not going to be grading on the right of way.
They do come onto our property, the drip lines.
Drip line that comes across.
The drip line, the trees that even stretch over your property line?
That stretch over the property line, so there's no grading in those areas.
And quite frankly, you've, you know, you've got a little bit of set, you've got at least a 10-foot setback to your, your retaining line. You're, I was looking at your top wall and bottom of walls, they're really not, it's not, it's a really, for a town of Farragut, some of the retaining walls we're used to, that's a, that's a tiny wall.
And the, and the only, the main reason is, is to keep out of the drip lines, so we're not grading in those lines. So that's, I mean, we had, it was even shorter before, but to stay out of those drip lines once they surveyed it, we had to raise it up just a little bit.
We do appreciate that.
Mark, your question about the detention, it, it will be revised, I'm working with, I'll work with Darrell on that, and we got to discuss, what we're working on now is, we don't know what's going to go on that piece of property to the east.
Right.
So we've got to come up with some sort of percentage of impervious area that we can be, everybody can be happy with, that we can make the pond work one time and not have to rework it again.
Is it something, because you've got the landscape plan going to the VRB, they'll need the landscape around it.
Yeah, I've already talked to the landscape architect and we've discussed that a little bit and I'll, I'll get him, whenever we get that design of the basin redone, we'll, we'll get that with him, so.
Hopefully, you guys are going to get some cool restaurant concept. Then you've got all your bases covered, you know?
Landscape plan, it was in the packet online if you got a chance to look at it, so it's a pretty, pretty robust landscape plan.
And two questions about the sign, that is going to be the location of the sign, that is 20 feet off the interstate right of way. I just failed to put a dimension on it, but that's how I put it there. That is actually the dimension of the sign as well. That is the width and.
The footprint.
The footprint of it, yes. So it's, that's, it is going to be on this site, not on the Topgolf site.
That's fine, it doesn't.
Obviously, you know, Chad, that's got to go through another review process, goes to a different body, okay?
That's the visual resource board, yeah.
Okay.
So may I have any more questions for them?
Thank you guys for coming.
The motion. Welcome, welcome, we're glad you're here and excited.
I'll make the second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you for coming and if you go back tonight, be careful.
We will.
Hope there's not too much of a slowdown at the state line.
And watch the highway patrol right outside of Waynesville. I, I know from experience.
Yes, yeah, they've, they've collected off me as well.
That's their way.
Maggie Valley.
It's a bigger source of revenue for the community there.
When do you guys hope to be open by? What is your goal?
Probably year build.
Year build? Okay. Okay.
Early '23.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number eight now, now this is for discussion purposes only tonight, discussion on request to amend the Farragut Municipal Code Appendix A, Zoning, Chapter Three, Section 12, General Commercial C-1, Subsection F9, Height Regulations to Provide for a Concept Plan Review When a Building More Than Two Stores in Height Is Proposed, Town of Farragut Applicant.
Let them get settled back there for a second.
Do we need to take a five minutes or?
I'd say we keep moving, if it's all right with you, Madam Chairwoman.
I can go ahead and start, it's fine. Actually, the next three items are items that was brought to the Board of Mayor and Alman back in December for their initial input at a workshop session. And the first one deals with the mixed-use town center portion of the C-1 district. As you all may remember, that, that part of C-1 allows an option of up to four stories for a building. The original intent of that language was to encourage a vertical mixed-use buildings and to have a height that was consistent with the town center zoning district, which allows up to four stories. And so the requested amendment would establish more review and approval control where buildings are proposed that are more than two stories, that those basically would need to be looked at as part of a concept plan so that we could kind of evaluate, and I've got some proposed language in the actual district itself that was highlighted in red. So essentially, if somebody's proposing a building that is more than two stories, you know, you all would, would need to look at a concept plan before they submit a site plan to evaluate, you know, what the buildings look like, what their proposed uses are, envisioned uses, you know, the surrounding context, surrounding plan of development, the community objectives that would be achieved with allowing the additional height, so those kinds of considerations, so that it's not a by right action, it's, it's an action that is basically considered on a case-by-case basis in terms of whether it's appropriate for where it's being proposed. So the Board of Mayor and Alman was very supportive of this idea and so they asked me to put something together and, and get your all's feedback and if you're okay with this direction, then I can work, work this into an ordinance and have it back to you next month for a recommendation to the board. If y'all have any questions on this one, just let me know.
I'll give you guys a little bit more background because this was something that, all of these amendments were kind of things that were brewing as we, in the last couple of months. When we were going through the Biddle Farm approval for that project and studying the MUTC portion of C-1, I kept looking at this and thinking, if you look at the Area Regulations Five, A, One, "All Principal Buildings Shall Be Set Back a Minimum of 10 Feet From All Property Lines and Access Easements," and then we were allowing up to four stories, I kept thinking if that Kroger property developed and for whatever reason, commercial was fine on the main and residential above, we could have ended up with a 200-foot-long building parallel to. parallel to Kingston Pike, four stories high, 10 feet off of the right-of-way. And when you think about all of the development, the existing development around it, that would have looked so out of place and it would have been a use by right. Now, who would want to live in an apartment above a commercial looking out over Kingston Pike? So there's that whole idea that, would that ever really happen? But the fact of the matter is, it was, would have been allowable in our zoning ordinance as it stands. Four-story buildings to me, right up against the street, could look neat or it could be disastrous. So in my point, from my point of view, just putting this extra layer of requiring a concept plan for anything three or four stories doesn't negate that it can happen, it's just that it gives us that extra layer of saying, okay, that is not going to fit in here and we don't want it here. And it gives us that extra layer of protecting our mixed-use town center from, because context always matters. There's never a time when context doesn't matter, so I just, I wanted to add that extra layer of protection for us. So that's where that came from.
If you've driven down Cumberland Avenue through campus on the strip, you see some of that. They're right on the sidewalk, which is right on the street, and they're multi-story buildings and I happen to think it looks really bad. And it certainly prohibits to me any kind of changes that you can make in the street in the future. Every time I go down through there, I complain about it. And so if you want to see what that looks like, drive down Cumberland Avenue through UT and see it.
And to add a little bit to yours, that was one of the things I really appreciated about the mixed-use project that we did approve because the front, the commercial in the front is in keeping in form with what already exists over on the Kroger property where the shopping center, but it is built in a pedestrian-oriented and walkable manner. The four-story buildings are set further back off the road and actually when you're walking, when you're coming into that shopping, that walkable shopping area, that acts as a backdrop and it gives some weight to the shopping in the front. So those four-story buildings are very, I think, very well situated in the middle of that property because it will act the same way on the other side with whatever comes in on the other, from the South Campbell Station Road. So I think it's certainly something in the future. I don't know what's coming in the future, but certainly we just want to be able to control that a little bit more and this gives us, that's the language gives us that control. And I'll shut up now.
Well, also, it seems to me like if I have a business in that development, I don't want it hidden by...
A four-story building, yeah.
I support where we're going with this. The only heartburn that I have is, I've always really advocated objective items and requirements in the zoning ordinance. And I embrace what we're trying to do here and I also am a big supporter of our M U T C and trying to see it developed and grow the right way. Even though I may not necessarily be opposed to the, you know, four-story buildings and 10-foot setbacks, it is more urban in form and we are more suburban and, you know, maybe it's not the right context for us to have that on Kingston Pike. What I do get concerned about is, in the future, if we continue to put subjective items in our municipal code, we're sending signals to folks out there which are trying to evaluate feasibilities of a project, well, they may or may not approve that. Now, quite frankly, anybody that's looking at a project like this is, putting together a concept plan is really not that big a deal. It's not that expensive. You're not getting down into the details of stormwater and you're not getting down into, you know, architectural details and utility details and really expensive things. And quite frankly, most of the time, a concept plan could be used, could be designed using readily available G I S data. And, you know, basically, you're going to say, I've got a building, I need X number of parking spots and these are my setbacks. And that's, so that's not that big a deal. I like the idea and I've embraced concept plan requirements in the back. Again, what gives me the concern is using the word "may." I mean, if we don't want four-story buildings, then maybe we need to prohibit four-story buildings, but and I'm kind of, I'm kind of okay with it here because it's our M U T C. I just want us to keep in mind that we really want, at least I do, in my history on this planning commission, is we really try to make our zoning ordinance as objective and easy to read and understand. If somebody's from the outside of Farragut and they want to go to MuniCode and try to understand what our expectations are, they can reasonably understand our expectations and reasonably know what this planning commission is going to approve and not approve. Obviously, if they're asking for variances, those are different things. I mean, all bets are off, but, so, and I'm okay with what we're doing here tonight. I just, I just want us to keep in mind, you know, the next time we want to remove the word "shall" and insert the word "may," I think, I think we just need to really spend time thinking about what we're doing and the message that we're sending.
I think there's a simple solution to that and I think it's, we're going to do it anyway, so it says, it says the planning commission "may consider," just say "will consider."
Well, that the same as "shall," "will"? I guess "will consider" doesn't necessarily mean, doesn't mean it'll be approved. I guess what I, again, I'm okay with it here...
Well, it may or may not do something versus "we will look and consider," because that's what we're going to do.
Well, "we will consider..."
Consider that and everything we do, we're considering.
Yeah.
The M U T C is just different than the rest of the town. It is something that is very dear to heart, probably whatever is built in the M U T C because of the scale of it and the masonry requirement, they're not temporary buildings, they're not a strip mall that, you know, has a 30-year life that will get torn down. These are buildings that will hopefully last 100 years or 200 years and so we do want to do it right. And I do understand where Louise and the Board of Mayor and Alderman are coming from and I'm, and I'm okay with this. I just, I just don't want to just start putting a lot of "may" in there because it really makes our municipal code difficult to understand for somebody trying to evaluate whether or not they want to make an investment in our town.
And I, and I agree with you and I think the reason why it's, well, that's why the mixed-use town center was adopted from the land use plan because that's the only portion that's been adopted so far from the land use plan because it's that important. To get a mix of uses, which tends to be urban anyway, in a town area that grew up suburban is a really tricky thing. Context matters and the context of what's going to happen on the Ford property, it's going to take imagination, just like the Biddle property did. It's going to take time to develop a plan because you have commercial there, you have office zoning, but you also have single-family, low-density residential and that has to be considered when we develop that. So it's going to look different, so, and it has to be done well because this is, this is to me our asset, our biggest asset in our town. This is what's going to, in a way, keep us relevant and desirable and give us that town center sense of place that we've been looking for.
Louise, does our transitional language that we use in the M U T C that talks about, and I'm trying not to talk about transitional zoning, I'm trying to talk about transitional form.
Yeah.
And maybe that, that's the language that we're, that's kind of what you're talking about, is not putting a four-story building up next to a single-family residential. And I, and I agree with that. I think that, I wonder if there's a way that we have more meat in our language when we're talking about the requirement to transition over a, over, you know, from single-family, then maybe you have duplexes or triplexes, then maybe you have a, you know, a building with, you know, four units in it and then maybe you have a little taller building, it's kind of stair-stepping it. There is, but maybe only that language is in our land use plan and that particular language is not necessarily in the M U T C enough to create the protections that you're trying to ultimately create. I see, I understand what you're doing. I suspect you've had some terrified homeowners in Glen Abbey call you and say, oh no, they could build a four-story 10 feet from my property line. And I understand that, but I just wonder, instead of doing this "may," you may be able to do this or you may not be able to do this, maybe there's other, there's other language that we could wordsmith in our ordinance that would give, that would create the protections that you want to create without, without putting the subjectivity into the zone.
Well, I guess why I want that subjectivity is because that's, I want them to come with a concept plan. If we are going to do something with four stories, we need to know what that looks like.
Agree.
We, just by providing some kind of concrete still doesn't give us the kind of really control we want to have. This, requiring a concept plan for anything that's three or four stories provides us with that additional, okay, I've seen it, yes, that makes sense. And so that's what, that's really what I'm going for, is that that concept plan is required for anything over two stories.
One of the things that I have seen is that when we allow for more subjectivity, we've been taken advantage of.
Yeah.
And I don't want to be taken advantage of and it end up being something that the residents of the town are not happy with.
Or it doesn't serve our purposes.
Right.
It's, and I, and that's what this is about. There's certain, because we'll get to it with the next one, with the N C C, these are more complex developments and we need them to look good. We need them to fit in and elevate and not look out of place. And so when you start talking about adding three and especially four stories, it could go wrong so quickly. And so that's why I just want to gain that extra control when we're talking about something that height.
Well, the key is for the applicant not to spend a lot of money, but with the days, with the days' electronic and CAD systems to do rendering, renderings is quite simple and quite easy, it's quite economic. And then on top of that, I think they do have to have some subjectivity by this board to, because of the fact that you can't be prescriptive on 100% of anything on what we do. We're being looked at by citizens to represent them, with a diverse thought on here, on this commission, to represent that. And we have comment opportunities. So I'm okay with it, we shrink it where we can. I think there's some tweaks to what's written here that make it stronger because I'll go back to kind of start what my comments would be, where in the middle of where it says the concept plan shall be first be approved before the site plan may be submitted, well, we want it to be before it is submitted, right?
Before a site plan is submitted.
We don't want them spending, we don't want, we don't want, we don't want to leave it open to where they say, well, we spent so much money on the, you know, whining on that. And then continuing the next sentence, in their review of the concept plan, the planning commission "will consider." To me, that's a checklist of what we will consider.
Yes, well, we will consider the surround...
Not "may," or not what I'm...
And we are, the planning commission will consider the surrounding plan of development and that's what we're doing. That's the reason for this.
Yeah.
So I agree with that. I did want to add one thing so that we, residential, having the, still having the opportunity of residential on the upper floors, there's, we're seeing something, I saw, they're called live-work townhomes and they were built out in Middle Tennessee, a small town in Middle Tennessee, and they have a development of these, these live-work townhomes. And so the, you have living space above and you have your business, whatever your business is, on the main floor. I think that's something I would love to see, certainly in our town center where we need a little bit less intensity and that could be a real opportunity. So I don't want to get rid of the residential on the upper floors of a building that's a use, I guess that's M in the use section. I do want to see if, since we're here talking about it, is this concept plan enough to, because people don't want to see apartments and they know, if we're going to see a residential above, I can see it in a, in a town, live-work townhome type environment, but they don't want to see any more apartments. Are we by requiring this concept plan for three and four stories, kind of trying to push the idea of apartments coming in again? Even though we've addressed it in our, in our land use plan, are we addressing it here?
Are we talking only, but we're talking only above?
Two stories.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
You can build two-story apartments.
Yeah.
I do want to make an observation that if you go to paragraph nine of the M U T C subsection C, there's a sentence in there, "Whenever the adjacent property is owned residential other than multifamily or agricultural, no building to be constructed within 100 feet of the peripheral property lines shall exceed the maximum height permitted in the principal dwelling units adjacent zoning districts. Most of all, the single-family zoning districts have a maximum height of 35 feet." I can't think of any other than the, than maybe an R6. So basically, R1, R2, R3, R4, and R5 and all the O S Rs. I wonder, is the intent just to have more control over four-story buildings in general? Louise?
Yes.
Anywhere on the property?
Yes.
But obviously, it's not just within 100 feet of Glen Abbey. There's other goals here, is that what I'm hearing?
Well, I don't know that we want to see four-story buildings 10 feet off of Kingston Pike on the Ford property.
On commercial property.
And that's commercial property.
Well, that's true, yeah. I mean, there's no doubt you would be eligible to, you know...
I don't want to mix M T, mixed-use town center with commercial.
That would look silly, that would look out of place too because you've got your coal setback and you've got the small strip mall to the east of it.
Yeah, I mean, well, I mean, you'd be, yeah, and across the street from Village Green.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, I understand.
All right, did you get those changes?
Yes, two, yeah.
Yeah, I think those are good changes.
You substituted the word "may" to "will"?
The concept plan shall first be approved before a site plan is submitted. He took out "maybe."
Okay.
And then in their review of the concept plan, the planning commission "will consider."
That makes it kind of a checklist, absolute as opposed to...
Okay.
That tells the person coming along who's looking at this, the surrounding plan of development matters.
It, well, it tells them, hey, you better pay special attention if you're going through a four-story building, which is fine. I, you know, I want it to be transparent.
Or three, three...
Yeah, I suppose, three or four-story buildings. And, but again, you know, some of this subjectivity, we just need to think about, you know, as we're making changes, you know, in the future. This one, you know, this is our baby. This M U T C is something that's very important to us and I'm okay, you know, creating something slightly different and holding the bar a little higher.
Yeah. All right, so we don't have to vote on that, we're just...
No, it's all just workshop. Is it all on that item?
Kind of, that kind of, didn't we kind of cover nine in that discussion as well?
I started to say, we've talked basically nine and 10 here also, to clarify that uses permitted in District May.
Well, nine is, nine is dealing with the neighborhood commercial district.
But it's basically the whole philosophy of, hey, we want you to do a concept plan.
Yes.
And quite frankly, what an applicant doesn't realize is, we could very well be saving them a lot of money by going to a concept plan versus doing a full-blown site plan.
Yeah, and well, the one that's going through rezoning now did a concept plan.
Yeah.
And so did, so did the Ivy Farms.
And quite frankly, it makes it more palatable.
Yeah, it does. Now, the other thing was to take out apartment buildings and that, so it was that plus the requirement for a concept plan.
Yeah, that's true. We have to, like, two pieces of meat that we probably do need to spend a little time on, on section nine.
In the N C C.
One, we've kind of covered with concept, the other is the apartment buildings.
I don't know if you want to read that caption first, I guess, for that agenda item.
Discussion on, number nine is discussion on a request to amend the Farragut Municipal Code Appendix A, Zoning, Chapter Three, Section 13, Neighborhood, Convenient, Commercial, N C C, to remove apartment buildings as a residential use and require a concept plan in association with a rezoning request to the N C C, Town of Farragut applicant.
I think the logic of this concept plan request is that this district allows for a mixture of residential, non-residential, so similar to the O S M R with attached and detached residential. So we kind of want to see what they have in mind for that mix before we rezone property, that's the idea, I think. And then removing apartment buildings as one of the housing options, there's a... one of the housing options. There's attached and detached, single-family. Now, an apartment building, you know, can take many forms. So, you know, one of the reasons we included it initially was to give someone a pretty wide range of options to transition to what might be appropriate around them, or internally, if it's a big enough piece of property. So, you know, there's things you could potentially look at as far as maybe a form-driven regulation, so that it's more, like you said, you know, more objective rather than subjective. You know, you could have a certain minimum width and depth of a building, if it's residential, can't get any bigger than that, to keep it kind of a single-family scale, if you will. Because an apartment building really is just a dwelling unit that has three or more dwelling units in it that could be stacked on top of each other. That's all it is. That could be a pretty small building. So it's just something to think about. If you wanted to do that, there could be some, frankly, I think the way the NCC's worded right now, with the two, two and a half stories and eight units per acre, that's pretty much going to keep away the large kind of commercial projects, apartment projects. They're not, just not going to be able to make it work for that. So what you might be missing, if you take that out, is potentially like a quadplex, or smaller, like, missing middle options that could fit in, like technically an apartment building.
So you're saying if you had a quadplex and all on the same level, that's technically an apartment building?
A quadplex, if you have stacked, if you have stacked units, that's an apartment.
That would just be attached, single-family, if they're just a single-family attached.
Can I, before you start, let me tell you, from my perspective as an elected official, if I have to entertain the word apartments, I will quit. We are worn out.
I know.
You know we are. At the elected officials' level, there is no appetite to entertain anything that has to do with the word apartment, whether it's a quadplex or triplex, and I get that there's a difference. We're exhausted. Single-family attached, single-family detached. You look at where we have mixed-use neighborhood designated on our land use plan, there's an area that backs up to Sedgfield. They're not going to want to see quadplexes behind them. The other area is what we're talking about right now, that they just talked about that backs up to that single-family low density. They're not going to want to see quadplexes. So they're not going to want to entertain it. And so I'm not interested. And the board was unanimous in that. So I'm pleading with all of you. Don't put, let's take the apartment buildings out.
Amen.
I'll be a devil's advocate a little bit. The Foxden Village, the old section of Foxden Village, which are known as the condos, in Foxden Village, there's the condos, which are kind of the older, they have a T-111 siding on them, and they're all gray. Those units are quadplexes. Most of those buildings are built as quadplexes, and they have two units up, where you have to walk up an exterior set of stairs. And so you don't have any living space downstairs, even though you may have a garage downstairs. And then you have two units down, and those buildings are four-unit buildings. Now, they were built back in the 70s, and beauty is in the eye of the beholder. I'm not going to knock any of those buildings. I've sold some of those units over the years to brokerage, and so I'm pretty familiar with those units. But there is a real market for that product. Now, the difference is, you know, there's ownership, and then there's rentals. And a lot of folks get hung up with rentals, but we really can't dictate, you know, you can't say, well, you can own it, but you can't rent it. I think that would be discriminatory. But I also want to throw out that, you know, there is something in the middle of a golf course in form that is what Louise has described as being unattractive, or maybe not unattractive, but undesirable. But I don't necessarily know, I mean, is that something we do want to prohibit? Is that that type of, I mean, those are quadplexes. There are two units up and two units down. Again, this is just being a devil's advocate, throwing it out there, that, you know, they're not always apartments.
Well, those would be apartments by definition, what you're talking about. And that's what I'm saying, apartments, people use that phrase a lot, and there's a really broad range of what could fall under apartment.
Right.
It's very broad. I don't, it's whatever you all want to do. I certainly understand the, you know, all the controversy that that has caused. And I'm just here to do what you all want, want me to draft for you guys.
I'm just throwing it out there, that, you know, there's things that are defined as apartments that don't really function as apartments.
There's all kinds of different forms.
The other thing that I have a comment about, which I think is kind of, kind of come around to bite us before, and I won't name the development, but it's a development that was referred to tonight, that it was so subjective, we didn't get what we wanted because they took advantage of us. But when we're talking about density of eight units an acre, and I think generally speaking, this planning commission has an idea in their head about what an eight-unit-an-acre density looks like. But when the developer has eligibility to call all their acreage, including their commercial acreage, if it's all under a single ownership, part of that density, well, you're going to get one area that is denser than eight units per acre, because they're getting the benefit of, you know, let's say, four or five acres of commercial over here. And is that something that we want to address?
Yes.
And the problem is, it's hard to define, because it's an imaginary line around the residential, and an imaginary line around the commercial, but it's all under one common ownership. I know staff has struggled with this before, because that's what happened about this unnamed project that we're talking about, is they took advantage of our density allowance on their entire project.
Yeah.
And we're like, wait a second, that's not what we had in mind, but, well, that's what we wrote in the municipal code. Again, I wanted to be transparent and objective, but we're talking about eight units an acre? I'm not trying to say lower the density. I'm just saying, is there a way to better define the acreage, what that density allowance is eligible for?
And how do you define it so that it's not subjective?
Exactly. I don't know.
Good question, yeah.
Or do you just take the density out, the density out of it, and...
I think you've got to have density. And I think there's so many developers are, can understand, the civilian engineers can understand what that means.
Yeah.
And I think generally speaking, they're going to see eight units an acre, they're going to see two and a half, two and a half-story height. The apartment developer's not going to develop within this zone. I mean, it's just, it doesn't, the density's done work, and the performance is not going to work. I mean, I guess if you've got the property cheap enough, it might still work. But my thought, I like having density in the piece that's very objective, but what I don't want to do is take advantage of when you've got a big-box store, which is not really allowed in NCC, we've only got a 25,000 square foot maximum, but you've got a, we'll call it the medium-box store with a sea of asphalt, well, they're getting benefit of all that acreage for their density. And is that our intent? If that's our intent, the language is fine. If that's not our intent, we probably need to tweak this language a little bit as we work through this.
Well, and that's what, if, that's part of that, could that be dealt with in the concept plan, in the approval of the concept plan?
Yes, but you're getting subjective again. I'm trying, I'm trying to keep it more objective.
But here we are with a concept plan, and we can say at that point very easily, there's too many units here.
As long as we have, as long as we can hang our hat on whatever rationale of why we're saying, hey, you're outside the boundaries of what you're eligible for, I'm fine with that. But the problem is, the way it's written, again, we haven't wordsmithed it yet.
Yeah.
But staff's just trying to get enough, trying to get enough discussion going, so they can, they can try to wordsmith into some sort of amendment. But anyway, those are, those are my thoughts.
I think that's very valid, how to get a handle on the unintended consequences of not defining our density better.
And staff may just have to think about it and digest it and sleep on it, try to figure out, is there a better way? Because we're trying to encourage this kind of mixed-use.
I think what we could do is add, is one of the requirements in the concept plan for the applicant to define an area.
There you go.
Define the residential area.
Define their...
Establish the limits. That is what you base your density on.
Exactly. I'm okay with that.
And that would, that would lower it down substantially.
What I don't want to do is, I don't want them to not share some amenities, or not share some parking, or something like that. I do want to, I want to encourage any common areas that could be shared to be shared. So they're just going to have to do the best they can to, you know, loosely define the residential area and the, you know, commercial office area. And that's something we can, that we do have with the concept plan, some subjectivity to say, hey, now, wait a second, you've included this whole area, and you're trying to include, you know, the detention pond, which is primarily for use of the store, you know, in your acreage density allowance. And we can say, now, wait a second, you can't count that, because, I mean, most residential, we really don't require any kind of attached single-family, we don't require any kind of, you know, detention for that particular structure. It's usually for the entire development and for the road network. But I think you're on the right track, Mark, with that.
I think that's, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'm making some notes here.
One thing we need to consider, too, is, in all that we heard from the residents of the Town of Faragut, against the idea of apartments, is the infrastructure, the roads, the schools, the, what does that do to our sewer system, our water system? That was something we heard from multiple...
We heard a lot from that, but the single-family detest is probably the worst for all that. As that spreads out, your infrastructure, you've got more to maintain over a bigger area, and you usually have more school kids with that kind of...
Well, and when you think about that, you're looking at it locally, and you're not considering, and you can't, I don't even know how you consider, the impact of development that's happening five miles away.
True.
North Shore has 260 acres in their planned, on the planned growth, on the growth policy map, in their planned growth area. And they, their planned residential can go up to five units per acre. So that's 1,000 units. And you know that's going to put an impact on our transportation network. So how do you accommodate that? And do we stop all of our, prevent all the development in town, so we can accommodate growth going on five miles away? It's, our network is, we've got, we have a Faragut area network, and that's hard to anticipate, which is why you build a network that gives people options.
Well, it'll be interesting to see what comes out of this session, what you all had this week with the county mayor.
Yeah, yeah.
Because if you look at the continued approach by Knox County, and putting the density like behind the weigh scales, we're out in Shoto, in some of the, what used to be farmland, and now you can hardly see between the houses, and they're all vertical, like, I call them monopoly houses. They look like just a little stacked.
That's what they're doing in Harden Valley.
In Harden Valley. But again, that's, you know, the Shoto and the...
A lot of it just goes down to...
Off North Campbell and coming in that way.
Fortunately, affordability is the big problem. Affordable housing. That's why this is happening like that. You can't spread them out, because you can't, no one knows...
The lane's too expensive.
No one knows this.
Everything about it. The infrastructure's too expensive.
Housing around here's gone up almost 25% in the last year.
Did y'all see what the average house sold for in '21? Was it not just overwhelming?
That's a problem. That's a real problem.
It is a problem.
Because I don't know what the answers are. There's not one answer.
I don't know that you can build yourself out of it, but the, and then, the problem is, you're building all these homes, but you're not addressing the transportation network that you're feeding all of this traffic onto. And then, at some point, Harden Valley has, I think they just did a study, and they have 5,000 homes in the pipeline.
You've got to be proactive instead of reactive.
50,000, average daily trips, given, probably, obviously, a little less than that, but still, and they don't have a network for that. So that's the, that's the, that's a, we're not, and we don't set land prices. Government doesn't do that.
Nope.
No, it's, there's a lot of, a lot of considerations with housing right now. It's a big topic.
All right, so you have the, what we want out of that one, right?
Yeah, I think so, yeah. Were y'all okay with the concept?
Mm-hmm.
It is kind of tailored around the OSMR, but then...
Do we need to read number 10 and...
Yeah.
Read 10 and 11.
Discussion on a request to amend the Faragut Municipal Code Appendix A, Zoning Chapter 3, Section 16, Planned Commercial Development, PCD, to clarify that use permitted in the general commercial or office zoning district may, rather than shall, be permitted in part of the development plan submitted for a rezoning request to the PCD Town of Faragut applicant.
And this is another thing, that in the current PCD district, and it does give some power to the planning commission and the board as part of the development plan. But the idea here is that one could argue that, the way it's worded right now, any use that's permitted in C1 or O would be allowed within the PCD. Now, it does have some, you know, unless otherwise prohibited through the approved development plan, which could nullify some uses that are permitted in C1 and O. But the request is to change that "shall" to "may," so that that adds a little bit more, I guess, review authority as part of that development plan, development concept plan that's required for rezoning to PCD, where you can kind of more thoroughly evaluate the uses that are envisioned with that plan.
I kind of see this...
The board is very supportive of that as well.
I see it's kind of the same rationale with the MUTC. The only, the only PCD we have is just the Kroger, right?
Well, the one we just, and the Biddle.
And the Biddle.
Yeah, the Watt Road, that's PCD, too.
Oh, that's true.
The Watt Road, and the two Kroger, and the Kroger and Biddle Farm.
Yeah.
And the purpose of me requesting this is, I really want to make it clear that it's the development plan we're approving. And understanding that when we're approving a development plan, we're approving the uses in there. Like, for instance, we don't want a hotel in the Biddle, on the Biddle property, at least, I certainly don't. That is an allowable use in C1, is it not? But it would not be appropriate in, at the Biddle property. So I want to make it clear that the development plan is the driver here, not, that all the uses can be considered, but that you don't have a use-by-right to put whatever, if you get PCD, you have a use-by-right to do whatever you want in there. It's the development plan drives what we're trying to...
The only thing that I can see here is, if you have a tenant changeover, what I don't want is staff of having to send that tenant changeover use back to Planning Commission because it wasn't contemplated in the development plan. And so, again, I'm thinking of all the what-ifs and could-ifs.
Good thought.
But I, that's, I mean...
I just want to be careful, again, this is one of those shells, and you're now going to be a "may." And I understand what we're trying to do, and I respect it.
Yeah.
You know, and it's fairly, you know, it's limited to, you know, basically two locations. But I just, we need to think about the repercussions of, I can't think of a particular instance, but every year, staff has some business that no one ever even thought of, comes to, I guarantee it, has come to the town, and they said, wait, I want to open XYZ business, and the town goes, I don't even know which category to put that. I mean, think about when we did Metaspalz. Is it a doctor's office, or is it a salon where I got, you know? And so, dog training, there's another one. You know, whoever thought, you know, you would have a dog training business.
Or zoning appeals.
So anyway, again, just, but devil's advocate, we need to think about these things and be fair and consistent.
And if the use is in the, kind of the genre of, like, you know, commercial, that's pretty broad.
Like your 1,500 square feet. There's a whole bunch of things you can do with 1,500 square feet, but you can't put a hotel in 1,500 square feet. So I understand what your concern is.
Or a Home Depot.
That's, yeah, that's, that's not what this is driving at. This is driving at the, I guess, the building use. The, if your building is a retail building with eight slots in, or nine slots in, or you're going to consolidate, whatever, that's a little different than converting that building to a hotel. So that's what I'm trying to get at, is...
We need to be careful how, probably need to go back to define the word "use" in our definitions, and just, I understand exactly what Louise is saying, but then I think...
This is not making that clear, is what you're saying.
Right. Example, and this is not, nobody that I'm working with, nor do I, I'm aware of somebody who wants to, but let's say, somebody wants an indoor gun range, and we're like, well, we never thought about that. And obviously, there's repercussions of your neighbors and sound, and fire, and safety, and all these other sorts of things. And maybe that is one that should go back to Planning Commission, I don't know. But we just kind of need to think about, that's, if it was a walk-in doctor's clinic... of need to think about, that's, if, if it was a walk-in doctor's clinic, and now it's going to be an indoor gun range, that is absolutely a change of use. And so, is, and is that something that, that we really got to go back and go to the, and I've been to some areas of the country that are very nice, you know, self-contained indoor gun ranges that aren't a real nice part of town, and next to a restaurant, and they, they figured out soundproofing and all that, but again, the, these are things that we just need to think about, that the staff is going to get somebody that walks in, and now, again, it's only two areas of town within the PCD, so it may not happen that often, but is this, is that the route we want to take of saying that if it's a change of use, any use may be approved? So that means that, you know, after the landlord's done negotiations, they've got to take it to the town staff, the town staff says, well, now I got to send it to Planning Commission.
Well, that is not my intent, is to, that, that we're, every time that there's a change in, because those buildings are, especially in the PCD, they're intended to be reused, building, small businesses come in and to being.
They come and go.
For a variety of reasons, they come and go, and restaurants come and go, and, and that's not the intent. The intent is for these, and I don't, I know, I know what you're getting at, but.
And maybe there's another word that we just haven't thought of, that's, that is beyond, you know, like, it's the, you know, it's, like you said, changing a grocery store to a hotel, or, you know, I don't know, I mean, we don't allow automobile dealerships, but a grocery store to a, you know, a rental car.
Yeah.
Or something, which we do allow. And so, you know, we just got to think about those things. Maybe there's a better way to define your concern without using the generalization of the word "use," which can be loosely interpreted to all the things I've talked about tonight.
Yeah, and, and not bogging everybody down every time there's a question.
That's one of the reasons why some communities are, don't, or, you know, we've never really relied much on planned developments either, thank goodness, but that's, and that's the reason, because if you have a bunch of those, can you imagine if you had 25 of them?
No.
You'd have 25 different, basically, each one of them has their own things that you can do.
Yeah.
So the staff has got to, every time something happens there, you got to go back and look at the development plan, in this case, and see if it's.
I kind of thought, didn't they talk about actually getting rid of PCD, or did we change our mind? At one point, we were going to say, hey, we're not going to do it anymore because it's so difficult.
We, we were going to try and sunset it, and actually.
Okay.
You weren't at the staff developer meeting, it took us an hour and a half to come to the decision that after, when we were trying to do, figure out the zoning for the Biddle Farm, that we finally said, we're going to do PCD.
Like, there's nothing left.
Really, really didn't.
Flexible one, that kind of met there.
Yeah, we really didn't want to because of the concerns.
Yeah.
And so, we're going to have to move along from this, but you understand what the concern is, Mark. We may be stuck with this language until such time as something.
May not be an issue, as few of these as we have, I don't, I don't know, but it's a good point to think about, because.
Okay, item number 11.
Use is like.
Discussion on a draft tree, public tree care ordinance that will be required to help meet one of the standards for an application for Tree City USA recognition, Town of Farragut applicant.
This is pretty much most of the work that we need to do to apply for a Tree City USA recognition. There's four different criteria, establishing a tree board, developing a tree care ordinance, this is what this is doing, having a demonstration that the community spends at least $2 per capita on tree-related expenses, and that's a pretty broad range of things that fall under that, and we, I've had Bud McKelby, Public Works Director, really kind of audit all that they do, and he's.
I'm sure we're well ahead of $50,000 a year.
Well, well ahead of it now, so it's, you know, as we have grown and we've added more tree cover to our public properties and rights of ways, then it's, it's been increasingly evident that we could easily satisfy that, and that's been kind of a sticking point in the past, is being able to really, on an annual basis, demonstrate that we could meet that. So the one thing that we didn't have was a public tree care ordinance. We have landscaping requirements that the Visual Resources Review Board administers mostly, and those are dealing with really private properties, but we didn't have anything in place that really dealt with trees on public properties, like parks and greenways, and so that's what the purpose of this document is. This, in addition to basically serving as a tree care ordinance, it would also establish the tree board and their responsibilities, which, one of which would be assisting with an Arbor Day recognition. And in the state of Tennessee, that's the first Friday in March, although most, a lot of states, it's the last Friday of April, but in our state, it's the first Friday in March, so.
We don't necessarily have to have it on Arbor Day, though, do we? We could change our celebration.
I think we could, yeah, I think we could do that.
Well, the city of Knoxville chose to do theirs in the fall, even though the official Arbor Day was the first.
Yeah, I think it gives you.
I think they do theirs in November.
Because it was a prime planning time, would be in the fall rather than the spring.
Yeah, it gives, I think it gives communities and states a lot of flexibility, as long as they just demonstrate that they did observe it and had some kind of proclamation or whatever, you know, event, recognizing that. So this is a, you know, more of a technical document, I guess, it's, you know, I did have our Public Works Director, and, because he's going to be, his staff is going to be doing most of the maintenance things that this talks about, and that's one of the reasons why the tree board itself, in the past, we'd always thought about maybe the VRB, but frankly, in, at least in my opinion, these trees are on public properties, and in looking at some other communities, it's pretty flexible as who is on the tree board. The Arbor Day Foundation doesn't really, really care that much, it's pretty broad. It seemed to me that having mostly town staff that deal with our public lands on a daily basis made, made a lot of sense, because they're going to be the ones on the front lines that would know what's, what tree or plant would go where, and, you know, the maintenance schedule and all that kind of stuff. We do have a utility representative that I'd like to have on this tree board, because a lot of our public trees are going to be in public rights of ways or easements, and a lot of those have utilities, and so we need to get their input. Ideally, it would be somebody from either LCUB or First Utility District, which I do have a couple of people that may be able to, to do that. They wouldn't, this board wouldn't really meet that frequent, maybe quarterly. Have a Board of Mayor and Alderman or Planning Commission representative, and then a member at large, ideally, somebody that has a background or, or interest in tree care, as a citizen of the town. So, and then, you know, some of the duties would be just looking at plant selection, maintenance schedules, you know, if we have park expansions, you know, kind of working through what kind of trees are appropriate for different locations, you know, Arbor Day celebration, recognizing individuals or projects that, you know, advance our objectives of promoting tree cover in the town. You know, maybe working on projects like, you know, trying to increase the overall percentage of tree canopy in our town. We're getting more developed, but can you actually, even with that, can you increase the amount of tree canopy and still build out your community? So, and how do you do that? So lots of different things like that, that I think they could help with, and then just establishing some physical requirements, really, for tree planting, to try to minimize issues with trees in the future. We've got some older subdivisions that have, when we used to allow the three-foot grass strip, and the developer had good intentions, they'd go in and put a tree in that space, which looked fine when they did it, but now it's, you know, basically buckling the sidewalk or the curvy, so it becomes a town project at that point, and we have to go in and rebuild the sidewalk, sometimes maybe even remove the tree, or trees, so what we're trying to do is to prevent that from happening in the future by looking more closely at tree placement on public properties, and then selecting the right trees for the right locations. So that's, that's really what this is about. It's only four pages. I don't know if y'all have any thoughts or input on this, or if you think it's the tree board, if that makes sense to you all, or anything to add to this.
Is this something that would go through the Planning Commission, or would it be the Board of Mayor and Alderman?
Board of Mayor and Alderman.
Yeah. I would suggest to anybody here, if you have a minute, to, for benchmarking purposes, to look at the City of Knoxville Tree Board and how they're structured. They've got a really comprehensive website on, you know, for the last 30, 30-plus years on.
Yeah, they have.
Well, they just did a tree canopy, I think they did Farragut, they included Farragut in it, an analysis of all public trees.
Really?
So, yeah, they.
I didn't see that, but, yeah, I, I went through that and, you know, really just spent an hour looking through, and it seems like a pretty comprehensive website that they have.
Yeah.
They consist of 11 board members, and again, it's engineering, public works, urban forester, an arborist, you know, make up part of that board. I think one of the requirements was that they have five professionals in the field that sit on that board, and then six other members that live in the city, and four at large that live in Knox County.
Yeah.
It's, it's a good, good resource for benchmarking, if nothing else.
Yeah, Alcoa's got, I think they have five members, and they're all, all the town, all their staff and the town administrator, I think, is theirs.
Well, I'm very supportive. I wanted, I remember we had that, for a while, he left and went somewhere.
Yeah.
Yes, when he was here, that's when I, I wanted to establish a tree board that was, I think that we need to do that for Farragut. I would love, I've thought about this, I don't know if any of you guys have ever been to Washington DC at the basin when the cherry blossoms bloom? I would love if we had something that we designated as the flowering tree of certainly our, our town center.
The dogwood.
Yeah, but we were, you need something that's a little bit larger and grander, I think, than a dogwood. Since dogwood, we already have the dogwood trail.
Dogwood Festival.
Yeah, but I would love to see some kind of a tree or a couple of different flowering trees that.
Official Farragut town tree.
It would, that would be neat in our, in our town center and really.
It could be part of a project that.
Bradford pear.
Yeah, not the Bradford pear.
Well.
You could go around, chop those down.
Tulip pop.
I'm very supportive of this. I think it's, it's been a while that, just trying to figure out how to get it done, so I'm glad that you've brought this to us.
Yeah, I would need to put it in an ordinance and then figure out where I want to put it in the municipal code, and then take it to the Board of Mayor and Alderman. Y'all would have to make a recommendation, just like any ordinance, and then, and then I would send out an application with the other stuff, and hopefully we'll be accepted and finally be recognized Tree City, because we've, we've always promoted landscaping and tree cover, more than really anybody around us, so it's kind of ironic to me that.
That we've not done this yet.
We haven't been a Tree City for a long time.
Yeah.
Call you a tree hugger, so it's very appropriate that you should do this.
Bud, Mr. Husqvarna, are on the tree board, so that'd be an interesting dichotomy there with.
Is the designation for Tree City USA, is there a monetary commitment to that, as far as, do you maintain that designation?
You have to maintain that every year.
What is, you know?
$2 per capita. You have to demonstrate.
I'm keen to keep the designation, I mean, do you have to pay it through their organization?
Do we have to pay something to the organization?
Yeah, I don't know, I'd have to look at that. I don't think it's much, I can't remember. There probably is an annual membership fee, just like planning membership or something like that.
I was just curious.
I can't remember what it is, but it's, it would be very much. We've just always had the problem of really documenting it, we could spend $2 per capita because we don't have our own utilities, and a lot of that is where that money comes into play, or an arborist like the city of Knoxville, because they can basically take most of his salary and apply it to it, and his job duties.
Yeah.
And a lot of that can go toward their Tree City, so, but I think we'll be fine. If y'all are okay with this, I can work it up and have it ready for a recommendation next time.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Sounds good, right.
Item number 12, approval of utilities, no utilities at this time.
Don't have any tonight.
And 13, citizens' form.
No one signed up to speak.
So the January 20th, 2022 meeting of the Farragut Municipal Planning Commission is adjourned.